I would call to order the regular meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission here on Wednesday, May 11th, 2022. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Scales. Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales' train just pulled up outside. He'll be a few minutes late. If anyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while I have you folks standing, anyone who testifies tonight has to be sworn in. So village staff and audience, would you swear that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the truth and the whole truth? So help you God.
Yeah.
And anyone who testifies has to sign in with contact information, their name either out in the hallway or up here at the podium. And please, everyone, let's silence our electronic First order of business is approval of the amendments for the April 13th, 2022 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move Van Buren second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. Next item is open forum. If there's anyone here present tonight who would like to address any issue that is not on the, tonight's agenda, this is your chance. I see no one, so we'll move on to review the public hearing procedures. For your information, the, the way we handle each, each item on the agenda is the petitioner is identified. You would present first, followed by staff comments, and then the board comments, questions, and finally a vote. And I'm sure you're aware that this, this commission is a recommending body only. Our vote is a recommendation to the village board regarding Under new business, Planning and Zoning Commission 0222022, a request from M&amp;M Westmont LLC, also known as Freddie's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers, and BCS Development Westmont LLC regarding the property at 80 West 63rd Street in Westmont for the following: a site and landscaping plan approval for the construction of a new drive-through restaurant in a planned development overlay district in the underlying C1 Commercial Business District. Who would present on behalf of M&amp;M?
Good evening.
Is it working? Speak up, I'll tell you.
I'll just, I'll just speak louder. Good evening. My name is Austin Lage. I am civil engineer with BHC. With me tonight are Sandy and Eric from M&amp;M Custard. We are wanting to put in a new Freddie's at 80 West 63rd Street. It's seen here, our site plan. We will be, there's an existing entrance off of West 63rd. Drivers can drive in there, a right turn only, and then immediately turn right, and then a left into our drive-through, or left into parking. Can also circle the site to more parking on the west side. This is the grading plan and drainage. We are going to be using existing infrastructure on-site. There's a pipe that runs north to south. We are going to be putting area inlets over that pipe and to direct stormwater into those pipes. And then last, lastly, here are some renderings of the building. I will let Eric come up and talk about his business.
Thank you for having us. We're excited to bring this concept to the Westmont area. M&amp;M Custard has been in business since 2010. Our first store was the 59th Freddie's across the United States. I had the pleasure of meeting Freddie, and so I understand his ideals. And we're, we're very excited to bring this concept to your village. We, we view ourselves, if you haven't been to one of our stores, we view ourselves more as a fast casual, not a fast food. We try to create an environment that's welcoming for families, as well as baseball teams and so on. We like people to stay and hang out with us. We conduct business, I kind of, if you've been to Culvers or Portillo's in the area, we conduct business more along that lines. Our concept is generally a quiet concept. A lot of villages and towns want to know what kind of noise we bring to the area. We don't bring a lot of noise to the area. We are open till 10 o'clock on weeknights and 11 o'clock on weekends, but the preponderance of that is, is drive-through with a little bit of dine-in business in the middle to late evenings. We don't do any breakfast, so we don't have any breakfast traffic coming through our locations at all. But we do offer fantastic hamburgers, steak burgers, as Freddie would say, custard, french fries, hot dogs, et cetera. We're really excited about this building. This is the prototype building for our concept. We're actually building this in this exact same building in Romeoville, right? And it just started construction two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Yep. So, and that will open in mid, in mid-August. And then we're kind of projecting this one to open if everything goes well.
Mid-October.
Mid-October, so right in time for the holiday season. Happy to answer any questions about our concept. This will be the, either 38th or 39th store for our concept, depending on where it kind of times out with another store. We'll see who wins the race to be number 38. So happy to answer any other questions you guys might have when you're ready. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Sandy, or did I?
Eric basically talked about Freddie's, but we need to talk about M&amp;M as well, which is the franchisee. And Eric started the company with a partner, and they basically built it to be a company that cares about people. I know we hear that a lot, but they honestly do. They care about people and they care about community. There's a lot of community, community events that M&amp;M is involved with, and it's really going to be a value to the community of, of Westmont. And that's it. I just wanted to say that.
Well, good. And we would welcome you to join the Chamber of Commerce when you get, get underway as well. Staff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be a lot more technical, but hopefully not overwhelming. So as we know, this is part of the Market Center planned unit development. This has replaced a dilapidated mall. This started many years ago. This was an outlot that was created with that initial approval. So this outlot and the one next to it was always anticipated to have a drive-through restaurant. So luckily, we do have a good model in terms of the site plan of the Raising Canes next door is very similar in a lot of respects to the way that this design is coming before us. So sometimes we, we don't know what it's going to look like when it's built, or how it's going to circulate. This is at least very similar. I'm not going to say it's the same, but it's very similar. When the Market Center PUD was set up, we actually established special use permits. So if you know, most drive-through restaurants need a separate special use permit approval, and that's where we like to analyze, what are your hours? How many employees do you have? How, how is the drive-through going to operate? Is the menu board going to be too noisy? And all those questions about the business use. However, we don't need to do that tonight. It doesn't mean you can't ask questions about that, but there is no special use approval because we basically got that approved with Market Center many years ago because we wanted to make this property very development-ready. So we basically looked at circulation patterns when the entire development was built. We looked at, you know, anticipated circulation patterns for these two lots. So we established the special use approval at that time. So what is before you tonight is only a site and landscape approval. So that is typically the most, the simplest things that come before us. So there, there are no variances being requested, which means that they're meeting our codes. They've met our design guidelines in terms of the entire building is built out of brick. A lot of times, we have active discussions with the property that comes before us because they don't want to do all brick. And our code doesn't require all brick. It just prefers all brick. So in this case, they have met our preference of doing an all-brick building. And it's not just a brick veneer. It's actually brick. So they don't need to ask for a waiver to the fire codes for a non-masonry construction building. This meets the masonry standards. The circulation pattern, when you do pull in, there is a right in, right out, right in front of the building that was designed with the overall development. You pull right in, you have to go immediately right because the circulation around this building goes counterclockwise. And so then you can either pull in and park, you can go to the north and enter the drive-through, you exit the drive-through coming south, and then your options are either to go back out onto 63rd, out of the right out, so that would send you heading west on 63rd, or that drive aisle in front of the building is a two-way drive aisle. You can go over in front of Raising Canes and then either go into the primary development and spend more money, or you can take a right out of there and get out of the shopping center and either take a right or left out of that, that exit. If you remember, there was originally anticipated to be a much higher intensive use where Amazon now sits. It was going to be a movie theater. So this right in, right out was kind of designed to alleviate some of the pressures of traffic, in particular, serving the overall development. So it can still serve the development. There are access points where people can leave Amazon and come down south and still get out of the property there. There are no variances requested, but I at least want to highlight that there was a variance for front yard setback when the overall development went in. So we have a 30-foot front yard setback for both buildings and parking along 63rd Street. When this development went in, they got a universal variance to 12 feet. So the parking lot in the front meets that 12-foot requirement. So it, it's an exception that was built into the design. So they've met that design, and actually it exactly mirrors what Raising Canes did across the street. In fact, the landscape that is in front of the parking lot was built by the overall developer and is the responsibility of the developer because all the exterior landscape is part of the requirement of the, the development, not necessarily this lot owner. Otherwise, it meets all of the bulk standards. It meets all of the floor area ratios. It meets height. It meets other setbacks that we have required. And then the site plan, it meets all the requirements for our landscape regulations. Signage is shown on the building. However, no signage variances are requested. It doesn't quite meet every code we have, but we've made sure that they put disclaimers on the plans that state that when they do come in for permit, we will then examine your signage and make sure it's in compliance. It's mostly in compliance with what they're showing, but there are a few outstanding outliers that may or may not meet conformance. We haven't quite analyzed that just yet. As they had stated, no on-site detention is required. Basically, we set up detention for this entire development when it was built. That's why the pond was built over by the fire department on the other side of Cass. It was to serve this development and alleviate the development of the detention requirements. And then lighting and photometrics. So as you know, our lighting and photometrics require zero at the lot line. In this case, the only relevant lot line is the lot line that's on 63rd Street. We don't care if light spills to the north, east, or west because that's part of the overall development. In fact, you want lot, you want light spillage because that makes the parking lot, you know, safer. But they have shown that they meet the zero-foot candles at the lot line. And that's not only for the parking lot lighting that they're installing, but their design actually has one of those lighted red strips at the top cap of the building. We've asked for that to be downcast and shielded so you can't actually see the light fixture, but it will cast a red hue on the building at night. And so that, that lighting photometric does actually still meet the zero requirement even with that lighting that's on the building. And as always, I didn't cover everything. I just wanted to highlight some things. So if you have any questions, staff is available.
All right. Thank you. That was excellent. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the petitioner? Seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Scales, you're here.
All right, yes, thank you.
Would you like to start?
Yeah, I was at the world's longest train, so I apologize for being a little late here. I don't have a lot of comments. Quite frankly, I'm glad there's going to be a high-protein option right out in front of the gym that I go to, so that's going to be good. But happy that you guys are here. I guess I was curious, maybe not a question for the applicant, but just because I do frequent this center and come out in that interior roadway that would be to the north of their site. Has there been, I was, and I've not experienced it, but I see the two entries there. No issues with traffic or interior roadways backing up and since the site's been developed?
None that staff knows of. When this was developed, I would never say that all of the access points were ideal. What it was is we had a shopping center that had current access points that some were trying to be preserved, some new ones that were introduced. And it was very much modeled for a movie theater that would have high demand just, you know, for an hour when people were coming to a movie in an hour. So it wasn't continuous. I don't know of any backups. I think it's always going to be difficult if you're trying to turn left out of that shopping center.
Yeah.
You know, and there, there are better options if you go to the, the exit that's over off Cass, and then take a right and go to the traffic light at Cass and turn left there. Or if you go through Mariano's and get to the traffic light there, those are your better options to get safely going.
Certainly the safest one. I've tried the left onto Cass. That's a nail-biter.
It was never ideal. I don't know of any real backups. I'm sure that sometimes it's frustrating if someone's trying to get out of there because there are better places to turn left out of there. But I don't think that this project will help or hinder what is existing there now.
I agree. And it probably wasn't germane to this particular site, but I was curious how that was, how that was going. But no, I'm glad you guys are here. Thanks for coming to our community and look forward to having you.
I would, I would add that that left turn onto Cass was the very same even before this Market Center project came into being. And Commissioner Lavoy?
Well, it's a great project. I like the overall set. It's very complete. I do have a, of course, I have a couple of technical questions like I always do. One relates not to the applicant or this project, but to be fair, totally to be fair, and that is when we had the Raising Canes presentation, we talked about the logo on the side of the building. And I don't remember, Joe, maybe you can help me out, but you were here. Was that part of the sign, square footage, or was it not?
I was here when they first made their presentation and they deferred signage. Then they approached a sign variance because, yes, the logo was considered signage. And actually, they abandoned that before it came forward. And my understanding was that there was a sign company working for the company that was the promoter of all this additional signage, and that when the owner realized that the sign company was pursuing these variances, they basically said, we don't need all this signage. So...
Because it never happened.
It never happened.
Yeah. So I, when I go out and look at this project, that, that stuff that we talked about for the sign didn't happen. But it's only because of the ice cream cone.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
You know, it hit my memory that, hey, we did this before, and I just want to make sure we're consistent. That's all.
It was a big picture of a dog and some other stuff that they were trying to put on. Yeah.
It didn't say anything. It wasn't, it wasn't any lettering. It wasn't anything to do with any kind of directional signage or a company signage, nothing. It just was like a symbol. And it's right next door, and I want them to say, hey, there's the ice cream cone. Why didn't we do that? You know, so anyway, that's one comment.
The ice cream cone meets all of our requirements in terms of size, shape. And the thing is, is we allow signs to come 18 inches off the building, and this cone is three-dimensional, and it is, I think it's right at 18 inches, so it meets our requirements.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it at all. I just want to be consistent with what we've done. And just a couple other technicalities. On sheet C1.0, we just have a couple of things, just to clear things up. On the west side of the property, we show an existing ingress egress easement. Has that been extinguished? Has that been vacated? Is there something, you know, that little, where it was realigned, where you see the, the dashed lines that are realigned now to the new parking lot? Is that something that has been officially vacated? Because what I would want to have the applicant do is say, oh, well, the neighbor has rights to drive through your property, and you're developing the property in that location, and if it hasn't been vacated, it should be. Not necessarily...
You're talking about the, the public utility easement on the west side?
No, it's the access. It says access easement. It's right below the dumpster, and it's on the neighboring property to the west.
Separate. I mean, this is blocked off here.
No, he has no access to that.
If I may interject, I believe that access easement, if you look, it's, it's kind of got, kind of a, an arrow. Well, it kind of goes like this. I think that spread is to the, just to the dimension of that driveway that's there to the north.
Yeah, it looks like it's been realigned, but I just don't want to have any hardship of the applicant to have, you know, the improvements here and then have the neighboring property owners, since I have rights to drive through there, and, because of that access easement.
I believe it, sorry, I believe it, it stops at our property line, that access easement. Go, go on, right. I believe it stops at the property line.
Okay. The gutter flanges on the access road on the, on the north side, they appear to be larger than the rest of the curbing. Is there a reason for that?
Sorry, say that again?
The gutter flanges on your access to the access road to the north, they appear to be larger on the gutter flange that sticks out into the, the drive. Yes. No, right there. Yes.
That is, we come out two feet onto that driveway so we can get a, we, we take out two feet of asphalt and put it back in so we can get a good curb.
Oh, so it's asphalt. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's to get a good curb, so.
Okay, I get it. And the last question I have is you left an opening there. Is that for snow removal? Is that for BMPs? The, the area between the two drives, you've left the curb out? That's correct.
Sorry, there is existing curb. We're not going to be touching that in the curb line.
So there is an existing curb there. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we, we are cutting here and here, and then...
Got it. Okay. Great. That's all I had. I like the project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I really like this project a lot. I think it's absolutely perfect for that location. And I have a question, but it doesn't really have to do with the site and landscape, with the, I'm just curious as to why there's only one window, one drive-through window. You know, the majority of drive-through places, you know, you pay at one, you pick up your food is, so if you pay and pick up your food, if you're waiting for an order, do you get put to the side and someone brings it out, or?
We don't do, we don't do the side movement that you see, for example, like at Culvers. There's a big debate going on in the Freddie's community right now about the, the need for a second drive-through window. And in the, in some of the future prototypes, you are actually going to see a second drive-through window. But even now, there's a new debate coming on. Is, is that going to be even a valid addition to the, to the building when we'll be using iPads someday? And your, your money will be collected well before you ever reach a window. And so everything's handed at that. There, it's an ongoing debate. I don't have a great answer for you. I personally prefer the two-window concept because then I can go ahead and hand out the drinks and, and take the money. And it gives a little extra time for the staff to make sure the burgers are correct. So that's a wonky answer to your question, but it's the best I've got in the Freddie's world right now.
But at the existing ones that are open now, if your order's going to take a while, do you?
We do not. We do not.
You just wait?
Yeah. What we typically try to do, so the, the ones that we have in Chicago, we purchased all those. What we typically do at our franchises, we like to make sure that our stack has six cars from the window to the order board typically, a minimum of five. And what that does is we never drop a burger until you order the burger. And so typically, our service times are never going to be, we're never going to be running a minute and a half. You're always going to have to wait, you know, maybe four minutes, most likely five minutes. And so if everything is working great, we just keep moving you up. And so from the time you order, it should be about five minutes till the time you hit that window. And that's what it would be if you came in the restaurant technically.
Okay. I was just curious.
No, yeah, anytime, yes.
Other than that, I like the project. I like the right in, right out. I was worried about that because, you know, it, it, you take your life in your hands when you're at that, in that area. I think it's great. I can't wait for it to open.
Good question, too. Commissioner Thomas?
It looks like it's custom-made for that location.
Yeah.
Good choice. And our, we welcome you. Or I welcome you. We'll vote whether...
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I, I like the, the concept too. And my only concern, Joe has covered pretty well, and that's the access to 63rd Street. And we can't change that, but there are enough options there to alleviate that. So glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you. I was the same way with regard to left turns onto 63rd, and, and that is still possible going back to the east, is to Raising Canes or Walgreens.
I believe as, as our residents learn and understand the site, they'll learn it's much easier to go over to Mariano's and use the traffic light. We fought very hard to get that traffic light. I think that, that doodot didn't even want a traffic light there. It said it wasn't warranted, and we were big proponents of it. I think Mariano's even said they'd pay for it. So I think that as, as people figure out that it's just easier to use other routes, I think it will help.
Well, good luck with this. And the chair is prepared to...
I believe you missed...
Oh, I apologize. We have another, another of our members. Sorry, Harold.
You're fine. You're fine.
I apologize. Commissioner Berry?
I also like the project. And my pickiest friend in the whole world said that he's been to them and they're great. So I take that, I take a lot of, and I, I agree. At the, as someone who does frequent that mall, you learn that there are certain times that you can't exit on Cass, but really it's, that light is, is, you know, and, and I think long-term, you know, we may see a light on Cass. And I know the fire department wants one over there, too. So we, we may see changes there long-term. And the one question and, and concern I have is the new drive-up, drive-through concepts that I, I'm a, I should clarify before I did, I'm a truck driver as far as a pickup truck, and then in my personal time, I have a SUV. So when I look at these drive-throughs, and even the, the diagram here again on C10 is, is, is all sedans going through there. And you see how tight that they get at those certain curves. And I've noticed that a lot of the new Dunkin' Donuts and different things, like you can already see the walls all scratched up, and, and a lot of it with the truck is a pull forward and move back. And, and Joe, you may have answered some of this before the meeting, but does that have to be so tight there at the drive, at, at that, you know, like at the apex of the corner to meet our landscaping requirement with that island? Or, or is it possible to, to shorten that up at all? You know, if you even look in the diagram, that, that sedan car they show there, you, you see there's, there's kind of no room for error as it makes that, that tight corner. No. So again, it, it's just a, just overall.
So, so Austin, I'm going to interject before you answer. Just so everyone knows what our conversation was, Commissioner Berry, what I indicated to Commissioner... What I indicated to Commissioner Barry was the village does not have a minimum drive-through width aisle. Um, we don't have a minimum brady eye, um, for a drive-through. So basically we default to industry standard and we, we assume that the applicant is following some industry standard. However, if the drive-through is made any different, it might reduce some of the landscaping area. And so what, uh, Commissioner Barry was indicating was can any improvements be made to the width or radii Um, without adversely affecting some of the landscape requirements? Is that a good summary?
When you say it, Joe, it sounds like, uh, exactly what I wanted to say.
I, I just, I, I want to make sure that everyone else has all the same information. So.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah, we, we can definitely look into it. Uh, I also drive a truck and I know the pain. The curb on the south side of the drive-through, um, as you, I'll just point to the board up here. As you circle through here, it is a zero-high curb. We, we needed to use that for grading purposes. But it would allow for a, a truck to roll on that curb and not scratch up the rim or the tire or damage the curb. So.
That's, that's better than a lot of them I see then. That's good.
And, and I did try to make it, uh, a little bit wider than we usually do, just so that we can, it is a pretty tight turn in there. So.
But excited to have you guys and great project. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Harold. I apologize. And for your information, I've done that to somebody, uh, every one of the last three meetings. So it's not just you. At this point, the chair is, uh, is willing to accept it and motion to approve site landscaping plan approval For the construction of a new drive-through restaurant in a planned development overlay district in the underlying C one commercial business district.
So moved. Scales?
Motion to approve Scales?
Second Lavoy.
Second Lavoy. Further discussion or questions on the, uh, motion? Seeing none, full call please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes and Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there you have it, folks. That's our recommendation of the village board and, and staff will let you know when, uh, when you'd be scheduled to appear with them. And, uh, welcome to Westmont and good luck. Good night. Good night. Next item under miscellaneous is, uh, certainly we, we kind of looked at where we're going to schedule this and on the agenda tonight. Very beginning or now. But, uh, like, we would like to introduce and to welcome, uh, our, our two new members, uh, Jill Peterson and Harold Barry to the commission. And, uh, we're happy to have you and, uh, and know that you're
Thank you.
You're willing to work with us and a lot of time, there's a lot of work. Tonight was pretty easy. Much easier than most and, uh, we do have a few things in the future coming up that are going to be much more difficult than, uh, what we saw tonight. So, welcome. Next item, I'll turn over to Joe, uh, for, for some review items on, uh, commissioner training and discussion.
Okay. I figured since this was going to be a short meeting, I had to make it longer.
Excellent.
So, so as you know, the director has asked that we, we look into some more comprehensive training for our planning and zoning commissioners. And now that I have two new members, I have an excuse to re-educate all my old members as well. So, Um, we're going to do a quick topic tonight and then we don't have anything scheduled for the Ju- June meeting. However, we're still going to hold the meeting and then I'll just throw together some other training. Um, so it'll, it'll be fair, it'll, it'll still be a standard meeting, but it'll be a little bit more informal because we won't have any agenda items other than training. So what I'm going to cover tonight, and I'm going to try to do this somewhat systematically. And sometimes these are the, the pieces of the staff reports that everyone glosses over. Um, so this is my chance to, to emphasize why we put that there and when you can use it as your tool. So what we established was you, you have several tools in your toolbox and it's usually things we reference. We reference the comprehensive plan. We reference our zoning code, which is sometimes hard to understand and navigate. We reference that we have design guidelines. Um, obviously we have engineering standards and some more technical aspects. Um, but usually when there's, uh, something to be approved, first thing is there's an authority for planning and zoning to See it, hear it and make a recommendation on it. Some of the ones are more complex, like plan developments or variances. And each one of those has a different subset of, of, I call them tests. Does it pass the test before it gets approved? Um, and in this case, I'm going to take site and landscape approval, not only because we had one tonight. But we had one at the last meeting that I would say was a bit more difficult and had a little bit more objection. It still met all of our standards, however, it still wasn't as pleasant as the one we had tonight. So I did do a little one-page sheet. I think it was after your minutes there. And so basically I just cut and pasted a lot of the code and I'm going to go over a, a few aspects of it. And I, I'm perfectly, um, open to stop speaking and take questions. This is, this is fairly informal. So if anyone has a question, you don't have to wait for a teacher to stop talking. So. Um, the first thing is, is site and landscape approvals. Um, the authority is given in section two dash four, five, oh, dash six. Um, that gives planning and zoning the authority to review all site plan approvals before they go to the board. Much of the code is actually written that the board has the authority, but as you know, they're the decision maker. We're the recommended body. That's the way it's written that way. Um, but what is site plan approval truly doing? What site plan approval is, is doing is it is locking in a site plan. And why do we want to lock that in? Well, for one, we had a building before us tonight that was all brick. And although we talk about site plan approval, we consider elevations of a building part of that site plan approval. And so they showed us all brick. We were happy to see all brick. Never fails that when they come in for permit, they value engineer the project, figure out that brick's too expensive and then they show us half-brick. So we're locking in that obligation. Um, so it's an obligation to the site plan and the way the site is designed. It's an obligation to the, um, materials that they're using. It's an obligation to the landscape plan because if they plant everything and six years from now it all dies. And someone comes to me and says, Joe, why is everything dead there? It's that site plan that gives us the authority to send code enforcement out and say, replace everything in accordance with your plan. And if you don't, we can take you to court over it. So it basically gives us our enforcement power. So it's not a request to bend our rules like the variances. It's not a request for a special use, which basically we're saying, your use might be appropriate at this site After we consider all of the elements of it and we consider the site. This is really just locking in a site plan. Um, so what do we need to lock in that site plan? So first off, there is a purpose and it is somewhat elevated. It's, it's basically cut and pasted from, you know, planning theory, but it says, um, site plan approvals to provide the, for the development of sites, Which consider all the elements of good planning, uh, so as to provide adequate relationship between structures, Both on the site and adjacent properties, between the land uses, both on the site and adjacent properties. While at the same time providing for adequate space, light, air use, bulk, promote health, safety and welfare. So basically that is the purpose of what we're doing, is we're trying to say, is this good design? And so for Westmont, we, the, our, our measures of good design are good land planning. So we have our zoning code that's based off of a zoning district. Um, we have a comprehensive plan that we often refer to. We have design guidelines that we refer to. Um, some of those are hard and fast rules. So our zoning code is a hard and fast rule. If you don't want to meet the zoning code, you have to ask for a variance. You have to ask for a legal exception. Um, our design guidelines and our comprehensive plan are only guiding documents. That's why sometimes when you hear us say, well, you know, the, the comp plan recommends something. That's what our preference is. It doesn't mean we have to be obligated to our preference in every scenario. But that is how we guide our decisions is by our preferences. But if they don't want to meet hard and fast rules, so I'll give an example, our, our commercial design guidelines in the downtown Say that parking lots should be screened with a brick wall, you know, a little low brick wall or landscaping. If you have a project that comes before you, staff would usually write, we'd really like a low brick wall, but they're not providing one. The reason they don't have to ask for an exception to the rule is because it's not a hard and fast rule. It's not a zoning code obligation. We also look at the bulk standards so that basically every zoning district has a subset of rules that says what your setbacks are. How tall your building can be, how big the building can be, how obtrusive the, the building can be. And obviously residential districts have nice, big setbacks. Commercial, uh, districts usually have reduced setbacks Because commercial buildings can sit closer to one another. Um, we have parking and access requirements. That's kind of in our, our engineering codes. Um, that is where our minimum parking stall sizes come in, where our minimum drive aisle whis come in. Um, and we use our best judgment there. That is why when you hear an exception to those rules, it's not a variance. That's a waiver to the board because it is a village code. It's not a, a, uh, guideline. It is a village code, but it's not a zoning code. And our review here is only on exceptions to zoning code. So you will often see that we say a, a parking stall is substandard. And there will be a request made by the applicant to the board for the substandard parking stall size. That it, that is because it is the board's discretion to allow a substandard parking space. Doesn't mean we can't debate it here and say, well, I have a, I have a, a big truck and I like ten by twenty spaces. Because nine by eighteen spaces are hard for, you know, people to navigate. So it's still a discussion topic. However, it's not something that we review and approve here.
It's like tonight when they had the eighteen and a half foot length stalls versus the twenty. And that was something you guys discussed.
So, so I actually didn't mention it in my narrative, but it was mentioned in your staff report that they weren't quite to the sizes. Um, when you all, you will notice that I always make sure that our engineering comments give an opinion As to whether they support that. And that's at my request because if they're asking for a, 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 an exception to the engineering code, and that is an engineering code, I want to know what the engineer thinks about it.
Sure.
And if, sometimes the engineer will support it and sometimes he won't. Um, and you, in theory, if he doesn't support it, we tell them to fix it. Um, and, and if he does support it, we say, well, you can move forward with this request. Um, the other things, we have landscaping requirements. That's in code. Um, that is not in the zoning code. So if someone doesn't want to do the required number of trees, um, that is just something that doesn't get a variance here. It's, uh, if, if the board is happy with the site plan, then they can approve a site plan that is substandard. Um, lighting, we have a code that says that your light shouldn't escape the lot. And there's a lot of ways we translate that. Um, hopefully tonight was a good example where I explained that they had lighting on the building. They had lighting from, um, the parking lot lights, but they did provide us with something that showed that they, that they could accommodate them. Now, staff does typically try to provide a lot of information. Sometimes we provide you with too much information. I believe that you will see as time progresses, as we try to get you to focus on what's before you. Um, things like lighting plans, we might start excluding. We require those as part of the review process. But as long as it meets the requirement, um, we don't need to show it to you. If it doesn't meet the requirement, then we tell them they need a variance and, and come before us. I, I think what it is, is, uh, a good example, tonight's plans had their sprinkler plans in them. So, um, staff could have edited that out because we're not here to review sprinkler plans. So I think you will see as time progresses that there are, there are a lot of extraneous sheets that, that they add to our packets. Um, and for the most part, we don't discriminate and start removing pages. Um, it never fails that the second I remove a page, someone has a question about a, a fact that is on that page. Um, and we will try to do our best to figure out what we're editing. Um, but we will start doing that just so that we can make sure that we focus and stay on topic. And as we have large projects coming before us later this year that are anticipated, I think that will be very beneficial That we don't get overwhelmed with too much material because sometimes providing you with a packet on Friday that is forty pages Does not give you a lot of time to digest, um, what is coming before you. And then finally, the, the last piece of that is health, safety and welfare. And we hope that all of our codes are always promoting self, health, safety and welfare. But for example, we had discussions tonight about access points and about safety, getting in and out. Um, and if these were new access points that they were proposing and we had concerns about safety, I think that would be a very relevant topic. In this case, they were dealing with access points that were already designed and installed. However, the last piece of this, and then I will try to stop talking, um, is there are actual measures That help you make your decisions. And that is this number three. It says, it says in granting or withholding approval of site plans, the board of trustees, It's written for the board of trustees, but it's actually the same things that we're reviewing here. Shall be guided in reasonable exercise, exercise of their discretion by the following standards. So it's saying that these four things are the four standards by which you are measuring this approval. And the reason I'm being very specific about that is if you have a problem with a site plan approval, You want to try to make it fit one of these four things because this is how you are approving or denying something. So the first one is basically health and safety is protected. The second one is that it's not causing injury to property values of other properties. So monetary impact to other properties. Um, it's protecting the environment and that stormwater is accommodated. And Westmont's very unique that we add stormwater there, but as everyone knows, DuPage County was a swamp. We always have water problems. DuPage County holds us to very high, uh, requirements for stormwater. So we write that is stormwa- that stormwater should be accommodated in the site plan. That's why we specifically stated tonight that it was accommodated for with the other development. Um, that's why you typically see some sort of preliminary engineering plans. Because knowing that a, a detention pond can be accommodated on the site is important. Because if it can't be accommodated, then the site plan that's before you is moot, you know? By the time you get to permit, none of this is real because you need to redesign everything. So we ask for a minimum standard to make sure that the design is real. Um, but in these four standards, a couple of things you don't see here. Um, your like or dislike of the business. So let's say you didn't love Freddy's. Let's say you, you liked Culvers. We're not having a discussion on who the business is. That is not one of the four things here. Your like or dislike of the use. Let's say you didn't like drive-throughs. Or let's say this was a use that, that was undesirable in your opinion. This is not a discussion of use because the, the use is already permitted by the zoning ordinance in this case. So you can have opinions about other things that are outside of these four things. Um, and you can have discussions about them, but when you're making your decision, you shouldn't hang your hat on not liking the use. Because that is not one of the four things for site plan approval that you can hang your hat on. It might be one of the requirements of a special use approval. And when we get to those topics, we'll go through those specific requirements. So the reason I'm saying that is, so Freddy's was pretty easy tonight. However, four thirteen North Cass, which if you remember, and I have two new people, uh, was a narrow site. This was the old site across from the library that had the, the painters in it for years. And it was a dilapidated old house that was converted to an office. That was recently approved for a two-unit residential building, a little duplex. But the site is very narrow. It's only like fifty feet wide. And most folks here expressed some genuine discomfort that it was such a narrow site. However, it met all of the minimums for a site plan approval. It just was squashing a lot onto a little site. And it might cause parking problems over time. It might, it didn't have as much landscaping as we would have liked, but it still met all the minimums. So if you have objection to something, you need to figure out how it fits with one of these four things. And that's up to you to figure out how to creatively say, you know, so if, if my issue was parking could become a problem. Well, you know, that might be a health and safety thing. I think that, you know, that, you know, if you cram too many I think that, you know, that, you know, if you cram too many cars in there, and and there's a, you know, some some activity happens there, you know, people can't get out, or people are blocked in. Now, that's my opinion, but I can point to that and say, that's why I'm voting no to this. Or if there was something else that I had objection to, environment is is here in providing, protecting vegetation, so if I really think it could have been landscaped a little bit better, I think someone, maybe it was someone at the board, had had a critical comment about on the north side, there was virtually no landscaping. I could probably hang my hat on that one and say, I don't want to approve this, because I don't think we're preserving vegetation, or at least introducing enough vegetation for this narrow lot with a two-story building that's only five feet away from the north building, and you're not providing much landscaping at all. I think you'd want more landscaping. So as we go through each one of these types of approvals, we're going to have a similar list, and I just encourage you that if you find objection to any element of that project, figure out which which item on the list is there, and then when you do your discussion, say, I don't think it meets number 3A, I don't see how it can meet number 3A, or whatever the the one on the list is. Because that makes us very legal in the way we make our decisions. The last thing I want to plant the seed, and you'll hear me talking more and more about this, and probably at the next, the the next meeting, is staff works diligently to try to get these projects as best as they can be before they come to you. There's a lot of active discussions, I'm not going to say their arguments, but, you know, staff is working hard to get the project the best it can be. Sometimes, like tonight, they accommodate all of staff's comments, and staff is happy, although we don't write recommendations in our staff reports. You currently don't see, staff recommends approval, because that's not how we operate here. We get the information in front of you. Conversely, we never write staff recommends disapproval. But there can be projects that come before you that are not great. I encourage each one of you, when you see a not great project come before you, to ask yourself the question, is there room for improvement? And by room for improvement, can this be designed better? And if it can be designed better, I encourage you to ask yourself the question, should this case be continued? We very often see a case and vote on it on the same night. We are under no obligation to do that. So if the consensus here is, you know what, so I I use Commissioner Berry's example, let's say he was a little more persuasive on the drive-through width, and everyone agreed, you know what, I agree, that this could be greatly improved. Based on the response of the applicant, you have a couple options. One is you can say, well, can you improve this plan? Can we amend our motion and and allow you to amend this plan and make it better before it goes to the board? But you have another option, and that is, we can continue this, you can revise it and make us happy and come back before us. We shouldn't feel guilty if we're delaying them, we want the best projects. So I'm planting the seed now, and you'll hear me hear me reiterate it. If you see a a project that is imperfect come before you, and you want to activate the discussion of, well, you know, we're hearing a lot of not happy comments that are coming forward, and it seems like this can be redesigned. Sometimes it can't be redesigned, the site is just too small, this is the only option. But think about it, can it be redesigned? And do you want to then tell the petitioner, you know what, redesign this, because it really sounds like this might get a negative recommendation, the way this is going?
Joe, what's that process, once they, if we were to tell them to go back and redesign it, does that set them in motion for how quickly they respond to you, or are they already out two or three meetings to come back and plan a zoning?
We would have to do it on a case-by-case basis. What we do have to announce in the meeting is what is called a date cert. So if it's something that had a publication, so we published that this this case would be heard tonight, then we have to tell the public exactly when we're going to rehear it. Now, in a perfect world, if it's a very simple modification, we can do to the next meeting.
Okay.
Now, the next meeting is a month away. That usually means that they've got about a week and a half to revise their plans, and then I need two weeks to re-review it, and then put packets together for the next meeting. So that's not a lot of time.
And get comments back to them on a cert, too.
Well, it's, I can get my comments very easily, but I have an engineer that has to review them, I have public work sometimes, I can't make promises for other folks and what their workloads are, so we typically ask for two weeks to re-review new plans.
And not that I'm suggesting that it's not worth the time, I was just curious what they, what that triggered then for the process.
Yes. So so if it is involving extensive redesign, then I'd probably recommend, while we were here having that discussion, that we should probably move it to August, or, you know, a bit further.
What if the applicant says, no, I don't want to redesign it? What?
That I don't have an answer for without the attorney here. I do not know if they say, we want a vote. And that would be a good attorney's eminent question, when we get a little bit more in-depth with that, because I don't know that we can dictate that we won't make a vote, we can make a negative recommendation, or it could be a positive recommendation, recommendation, I don't know how the vote would go. But soon as you make a recommendation, whether positive or negative, the applicant then can forward their recommendation to the board. So in, you know, we have a case right now where it, for one of the items, it received a negative recommendation, and the petitioner said, you know what, we want to forward this to the board, and not bring it back to planning and zoning to try to make planning and zoning happy. That is their legal right to do. But if they haven't received the recommendation, they can't forward it to the board just yet. I just don't have an answer as to if they demand a vote, I don't know what our authority is. So I will try to get that answer for you.
And Joe, the procedure's always the same, that these packets would come the Friday before the meeting, so if if it is something that's controversial, whatever, that they're going to have to come back. It's not that we get a packet two weeks ahead or anything like that.
Our processes could accommodate a larger lead time, but it means that we have much less review time on staff's side. Now, you know, on particular cases, we will try to do that, but quite honestly, if if you get a packet on a Friday, and it is a very intensive project, maybe everyone should just approach it thinking, you know, I don't know that we're going to get a vote, to a vote tonight, there's a lot of stuff to discuss. And if you remember, not everyone was here, but I think everyone remembers, when the Hilton project came through in 2017, I think we went through three or four meetings. I think we we approached every meeting that that maybe we'd get to a vote. Maybe what we should have said is, we know we're not going to get to a vote tonight, we're going to have to continue this, because our time is limited. So if we have a really intensive project that has a lot to review, and there really wasn't enough time to review it, I think approaching the meeting, kind of with the general assumption, we're just starting the discussion tonight. Now, if you say, well, there's some big picture things that we'd like revised before we have our next discussion, I think it's, it could be warranted there. In a perfect world, yes, I'd give you more lead time, but it never fails at these projects that that they're rushing documents to us at the last moment, and they're always behind the gun in terms of they need to get something to the meeting, and they they have an anticipated timeline of what their approvals should be. So we usually try to give them the benefit of the doubt, and we typically get the packets out on a Friday before the corresponding Wednesday meeting.
When there's a controversial project, so much of the time, at least the meeting time, is taken up necessarily by the public. And so that's a, one of the reasons why that last project you referred to was so long, is that everybody has to have an opportunity to speak, and even though they reiterate what somebody else has said, we have to let them speak. So that's that that really, even though we may have a pretty good idea of where we're going with it, that has a lot to do with with drawing these things out.
And and I encourage everyone, and I'm sure you all do, is is that the intent of the public hearing process is that maybe someone reveals something to you that you hadn't thought about, that you hadn't made your decision before, you know, when you read your packet, that you want to wait and hear what the public comment is. And doesn't mean you have to make your decision based on that, but I I just hope that everyone hasn't locked in their decision before they've heard the public comment. I sometimes, sometimes I sit here and and I just watch the show as staff, because it really is the commission and the and the public. And sometimes I, as the expert, knowing more about a project, learn something new when the public comes in and says something. So I can learn as well as everyone else based on the public input, so. Okay, that's all I have to say. You're welcome to ask me some questions. I think that probably next June, so the next meeting will be on June 8th, I will probably do a very similar talk about variances, special uses, and depending on how much time that fills up, basically, some of the 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 requirements of each of those approvals. Variances are are a whole other animal, because we have tests of hardship. You have to show us that your lot is unique, and so then it's a basically a decision on, do you truly have a unique situation that warrants an exception to the rules? But once we get through some of this more tactical stuff, then we'll get into some more examples. I know, Matt, you'd like to look at some examples, but first, I have to get the basics in, and then we can start looking at examples.
Are we going to get a packet with an agenda or nothing?
Yes, I will, I will still send it out a packet with some information, at least as to how we're proceeding with the the meeting.
Thanks for walking through that, appreciate it.
I would ask, have have Jill and Barry, have you received a copy of the comprehensive plan, the 2013?
Yeah.
Plan? If not, I thought you would be very helpful.
What I, what what staff provided was, we provided a big, huge binder, you probably got it with your packet. You don't have to go through it, those are the the common documents that we're referencing. So it was a copy, we gave, we provided a copy of the zoning map, we provided a copy of the comprehensive plan, a a copy of design guidelines, and then a copy of the zoning ordinance. And I encourage any and all of you, when you get one of my packets and you scratch your head and say, I don't understand this, to reference those things. Now, each and every one of you may not have a hard hardbound copy, all of that stuff is available on the website. In fact, I as staff, in our zoning code, don't have a paper copy, because it is so much easier for me to go to the website and type in garage to figure out where the rules and regulations on a garage are than it is for me to flip through the pages and remember all the garage references. So I encourage you that this is, those are all part of your toolbox, and the thing is, is that staff reports are limited, and they're already a bit lengthy. I encourage you to go and reference something like the comprehensive plan. I believe Commissioner LaVoy did it for one of our our past projects, and he had some very pointed details about how those are typically adopted, and and he wasn't comfortable with the the request that was coming before us for a one-off project. And he got that because he went and he reviewed the comprehensive plan. Sometimes I forget that there are pieces in there that are relevant. Sometimes we try to tell you what what parts are relevant, but there might be parts that are relevant that we didn't quote in our staff report. So I encourage everyone to always question what I give you. I'm not the know-all, end-all, I'm just trying to provide the best information that I can. And I'm never ashamed when I make a mistake or miss something, and if anyone ever needs to call me out on it, I will accept that.
Joe, is that comprehensive plan, is that is that coming to an end now? Is that a 10-year, is that, is that 2023, is that?
It never had an expiration date. What it is, is the goal is that it's updated every five years.
Every five?
Yes. However, I I believe that state statute only requires us to establish one. What it is, is it's common industry practice that it's best to update it every five years. Some communities do it every 10. When I worked in Darien, theirs was going on 25 years old, and they hadn't updated it. I think that the recent events of the Amazon era and COVID took a a comprehensive plan that we had done in 2013 and really flipped it on its head. We thought we'd get a lot more commercial built, we have a lot more areas designated as commercial that will maybe never develop as commercial. A good example was that 413 North Cass, we thought that whole stretch up there was going to redevelop as commercial. I don't know, at least in my opinion, I don't see that ever developing as commercial. If anything, it's probably going to develop as multifamily, because Cass Avenue is conducive to higher density multifamily. I think that staff is very aware that the comprehensive plan has a lot of sections that are not relevant. Unfortunately, updates to comprehensive plans are lengthy, and typically, that's something that you contract out with a a technical specialist that's very good at doing those, because usually you have a lot of public input, there's a lot of night meetings, there's a lot of where you sit around with with boards and and you draw what you envision for the village, because you want that public input and commentary, and those consultants are usually very good at running those operations. And I personally, I think that that consultant gives a buffer to, it's a third party that's kind of putting forth what the public has said is good and bad, and it's not influenced by staff nearly as much as as if staff was running it. So at this point, I know that there are elements of comprehensive plans that we're trying to look into, like better downtown design guidelines, because we've got these larger projects that want to come into the downtown now, and we don't have a real good subset of rules and regulations for them. I think the the hotel property and the golf course is a good good example of, we're not really prepared for, if a golf course does dissolve, what do we want there? We don't, our comprehensive doesn't cover things like that. We don't know what we want there, we thought it would always be golf course. So I think that over the next couple of years, you'll see that we do need to do an update to that. I think we're we're still waiting to see what retail is going to recover now that COVID is is somewhat over, and things are starting to rebound a bit, we don't think they're going to rebound the same.
Resurrected.
So. Anyone else?
You mentioned the 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 mall on on 63rd, just a little minute ago, the one that was recently sold?
Which mall?
The one where the Jockey Restaurant was in?
Well, we know it's under new ownership.
It is under new one.
We we know that the the historic owners that have let that mall set sit empty, we know that there is new ownership, we anticipate a project or two coming on that property.
Retail?
I don't know yet. So I can't speak to what might come there, I know it's under new ownership.
That's a good thing, because that ownership is.
They've they've already cleaned, so code enforcement's been working with them very closely, because there's been a lot of fly dumping on that property. So there's little kind of gated areas now, so you can't just pull on to it, and that's because they cleaned up all the trash that was there, and they don't want people coming in dumping more.
Yeah.
Did that sale include the the small piece on the north side of 61st Street?
No, it was just exclusively.
That's that's still the original owner.
I think so, yes.
They just bought the the Jockey Club one, not the, not their other mall next to it?
Yeah, not the, not the north side of 61st, just the south side of 61st. So I anticipate in the next six months, we're going to see probably a subdivision, because that is a big property, probably a subdivision and a couple of projects come forth on that project.
Good. Okay, thanks. Well, thank you, Joe, that was, that was very helpful. I'll look for more of it. Any commissioners have any other items they'd like to comment before? Could point out that the end of the month, Monday, the 30th, is the Memorial Day Parade at 10 o'clock down Cass, and then a ceremony at 11 at Veterans Park. And so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Barry?
Second, Thomas.
Motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.